We're at the Parks Arts Education Equality Subcommittee. It is January 24, 2018. I am here with my colleagues, Councilman South DiCiccio, Councilman Michael Nowakowski, and Councilwoman Deborah Stark. The first thing on the item is call this meeting to order, and I have called to the public. Thomas Stoops, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thomas Stoops, 12435 South 47th Avenue. I live up against South Mountain Park, and I'm an attorney, as you may know, that has been hired by some concerned citizens to look at the repayment of the 3PI. I think most of the questions that I have, Inger Erikson has already answered for me prior to this meeting, but I have a couple of others. I understand that there are some parcels of the eight that had been approved for sale that have been sold. I think there's another one under contract, in my understanding that there may be a bidding war on the Rosemont Park parcel, which is all good news, assuming that that all goes back to the 3PI. I also got a memo that I imagine you guys all got that said that some of the others are listed for sale. I'd like to know if all of the other parcels of the eight that were identified and voted on for sale are currently listed, and if not, which ones are not listed? I also had some questions about a spreadsheet that I saw from last year that were excess park properties were identified for sale. There were 18 of them, and the question I had is, we've got eight that are approved for sale, what happened to the other 10? And I think what Inger told me just before the meeting was that the others had been excluded because the money has to go back for impact fees, and that's the reason that they're not for sale. If that's the case, then I've already received the answer. I imagine Inger could probably answer the question as to whether all the rest of the eight are listed and whether they're ready for sale. And she can probably fill you in a lot better than I can, but I always like to have my questions made moot before the meeting starts. But that's what I wanted to hear about, and I particularly like to hear whether the rest of those properties are up for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. What I will do is, the February, March agenda, I would like that item to be placed on the agenda for future agenda.
And one other thing is, are we limited just to that one realtor? Can we open it up to other realtors too to get the best value for our properties? Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Jerry Van Gass.
Hi, Jerry Van Gass, 4610 East Villa Estrella. Michael, be careful what you wish for. Greta may re-up her real estate license.[203.12][203.12](Laughter). You know, I'm just, yesterday I was thinking about, it's 10 years ago, this coming March 1st, that the 3PI initiative was put out for another 30-year extension. And I remember, that was my first introduction to this whole process. And the first person I met at the kickoff for that campaign was Cynthia Rogers, who was the administrator of the 3PI Fund. And she, you know, was there up until October of 2012, when she retired, left the city. You know, and basically, you know, there hasn't really been a go-to person in the department administering this fund. And it's, you know, the fund is bringing in over $30 million a year, which is more than the entire state park system takes in. And, you know, the people voted for this money. They didn't vote for it to just be a gift to the Parks Department to use at their whim. And they want a little accountability, and we'd like to know why there's nobody, you know, actually overseeing this. You know, Inger can take responsibility for it, but she's got so much to do. I don't know, I mean, this is the biggest park system in the country, has the most funding, it's the most monetized system. And I think we deserve somebody with some financial expertise handling this fund. And we've got 20 more years to go on this, and, you know, and it'll be renewed if the people think they're getting their value, money's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Sarikowski? Sarikowski.
Good morning. Tim Sarikowski, 17412 North 79th Street, Scottsdale. Following up what Jerry was saying, maybe we could have a website set up called the 3PI Website Fund. And we could have this particular website, like the city of Scottsdale, we can have the money coming in, the money going out, and people would look at this and say, this is a very transparent fund at that point, and they would know exactly where the money is going. They could even have a daily amount of money in the fund if they had a website. And this would be pretty easy for you guys to put together and do. Set the site up, put the amount of money you have there, the amount of money coming in monthly, and I think that would really help a lot of people, and I think it would really get more people engaged in what exactly and how their money is being spent by the government. So I'm just throwing that out there. If we have the opportunity and time, let's get together, sit down, and say, here, this website should have this, 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 and this, and then everyone can just look at this daily, and then you guys really wouldn't get bombarded with all these questions about what's going on with the fund, what's here, there, and everyone would just say, great, if you want to really know what's going on in the fund, how much money is there, go to the website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have several cards called to the public. My understanding, it was an item that's going to be heard by the Parks Board in the future. So I will start the call to the public. And I think it's Eric?
May.
May. That was my name.
If I may, I know we have several cards that are interested, I believe, in the Los Olivos item. Because it's not agendized, we can't really comment on the item, but what I might suggest is that our Parks Director immediately meet with these individuals following the Subcommittee meeting.
So, what I just heard was that since it's not an agendized item, in particular for Los Olivos Park, at the call to the public, they cannot speak about Los Olivos Park?
They can provide public comment. We just can't answer any questions, respond to any clarification. But I'd like to offer that we meet with the group immediately following the meeting to have conversations about their.
So you will have two minutes to speak on that item. We just don't respond to public comment, basically.
Legally.
Legally. And afterwards, if you would like to speak with the Parks Director, Inger Erikson, you may.
Fantastic.
Eric.
Is this my two minutes?
Yes.
All right. So my name's Eric May, 3602 North 56th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. Thank you so much, everybody, for your time. Really, this is, I think, an important moment. You know, the Parks Department, I think, is taking a big step forward in their mission statement to build healthy communities through this project. And we're obviously humbled and honored to be the selected proposer. Green Belt Hospitality was the selected proposer of the Parks Department RFP to build urban farming, education, and concessions on a city of Phoenix Park site. I'm here with a lot of members of community that absolutely support this project. We did a thorough community outreach effort, definitely thorough, way above and beyond what was stipulated in the RFP. Let me give you some quick numbers on that. Three community meetings that lasted all day, from 10:00 to 7:00 in the morning, to 7:00 PM to get maximum community engagement at the Devonshire Senior Center. We've knocked on over 200 doors of the closest people that live to the park. We've sent out 22,000 direct mail, a two-mile radius, which is kind of unprecedented, we've been told. We built an informational website that has received almost 7,000 page views to our website. We've also been on the cover of the Arizona Republic, Channel 3, Channel 5, Channel 15. The story, excuse me, the story is really getting out there. I'd really love to share with you the results of the outreach within the three community meetings, a compilation of that data. We met with over 700 people that came through the doors. Once again, Director Erikson said they've never seen a turnout like that for a public process. Over 700 people that actually came through our open house. I'm almost out of time. 553 votes of support for the project, 13 votes of not support. Do I have any more time to give you any more stats, or is two minutes it? Okay. Well, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And that is amazing with that community meeting. Barb Hasselfra?
Yes.
She may need a mic.
I'm Barbara Holzoffel, and I'm 36, 28.
Oh, okay. Right about there. All right.
Okay. I live at 2830 East Pinchot. I have been attending Los Olivos Senior Center for at least 20 years, and we definitely love the park. We wanted to keep it that way, and I know we had an awful lot of people coming to the meetings and eating the food. It didn't mean that they really wanted the park to change. We love the park, we love everything that's going on, and we just don't like the idea it's being shoved down our throat that this is coming up. And anytime, anything, any building has been torn down, changes in the neighborhood, there's always a sign that says, what's going on? The city is notified. Now, we want to know why we haven't been notified by the city that there's going to be some changes in our park. We want to save the park. Thank you.
I believe Director Inger Erikson could speak with you afterwards about the question. Thank you. Robert Showman? No?
Yes.
Ralph? Got to get that Fit Phoenix exercise.
I can do that at the park. I'm Robert Showman, 4321 North 29th Place, Phoenix. I live across the, I live across from the park. I have been there for 37 of my 81 years. I used to walk to work in the morning, Squaw Peak, excuse me, Piesto Wall Peak was in my shot. It's not my fault, I thought it was my voice that was doing it. It's a beautiful place. Every day, there are people there who come from other places, other cities, other places around Phoenix. They come for family affairs, they come for exercise. To do away with as much of the park as designated by the proposal, I think, is not fair to those people. Just quickly, there was an article in the newspaper by a Judith Longmire. It was a question that we all ask. Why not send the park somewhere else? Send the park somewhere else? The proposal for an urban farm at Los Olivos Park, she says, is foolish, counterproductive, a counterproductive attempt to diminish the neighborhood's quality of life. We have a neighborhood. We have food. We have restaurants. We have laundromats. We have everything we need. We don't need this urban farm and restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. James Ramsey?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I've lived directly across Glen Rosa Avenue from the park for 25 years, and as Bart said, we have residents who've lived there a lot longer than I have. We strongly oppose this development, and I oppose it for the following reasons. The principal thing is it removes about 16% of the park from the use by disc golfers, sports activities, family outings, and many, many dog walkers use this park. The concessions include restaurants, shops, a market, offices, greenhouse, education center, and a two-acre farm, which is for the exclusive use of the vendor. It is not available for me to go plant my own vegetables. North 28th Street also has considerable traffic already with Camelback High School and a lot of commuters coming down from the Camelback Corridor because 24th Street and 32nd Street are so crowded. There are also a number of new apartment blocks going up along 28th Street, and that will contribute even more to the traffic. This proposal adds two more entrances to 28th Street, as well as the two that currently exist, the north side of the senior center, as well as Devonshire Avenue itself. I'm very concerned about the senior center, as she said. It is used by a lot of people, and it has a lot of activities going on. I've attended classes there myself, since I'm getting on in years myself, so. They have a large room in the back that has a glass wall that looks out on the park right now, and it was designed specifically to afford a view of the park. And I fear that that will be changed dramatically with this project. Now, this large room is used as a subsidized lunchroom for them, but for many, many other activities as well. Okay. Thank you very much. We need more green space rather than less. Thank you.
Rosie Smith?
My name is Rosie. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Rosie Smith, and I'm 84 years old. And ever since I've been in Phoenix, I have been going to Devonshire. And I just love that place. When I don't, it's just like a job. If I miss a day, I feel real bad about it and everything. And I love the exercise and seeing, I need all that because I have authorized my needs. We have everything there, and it's handy. And I live at 3033 East Devonshire Avenue. And see, it's just right down the street, and I can walk there every day, plus I don't drive anymore. But please don't take this park away from us, because it is my life. I thank you. Have a great day. Bye now.
Thank you. Zachary Walker?
My name's Zachary Walker. I'm a Phoenix native. I'm a professional disc golfer. I actually came to speak today on behalf of the disc golfers in the area. I originally donated, designed, and installed a disc golf course at Los Olivos. I am not against this project at all. In fact, the reason I'm here to speak today is because I know that some of the residents are upset about the situation, and a lot of them are referring to the disc golf as their major sticking point. And I'm actually all for the project for my own personal reasons. It has nothing to do with disc golf or the actual farm itself. We are on board with any relocation of the disc golf course as far as a redesign and moving anything to fit the needs of this project. So I felt like I was the best person to speak on that, since I am the original donor of the equipment, and I thought it was important that I be here today, and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Ryan Everson?
Ingram.
Ingram. I'm like, I think I need readers now.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. I'm honored to speak here today. My name is Ryan Ingram. We live at 3028 East Glen Rosa Avenue, and we are 100% in favor of this park initiative. I also play disc golf. I love the course. We have three dogs. We take them there all the time, but who I don't take there are my kids. And why don't I take my kids to the park? Is because yesterday I had someone try to sell me stolen golf clubs. I witnessed a drug deal, and I saw someone get arrested at the park. So we ride our bikes, we take our dogs to the park, but we do not take our children to play there because it's too dangerous. We take our kids to Coachina Park on 40th Street and Campbell to play with other families. We believe that this is imperative to improve the quality of the park in the neighborhood. The Arts and Education Center will bring lots of families alike ours there to play with their kids. Montessori, Villa Montessori is right down the street. Those schoolkids will be able to utilize the Arts and Education Program to learn about urban farm-to-table initiatives. Also, I wanted to piggyback on some other stats that my good friend Eric didn't get to mention. The online petition of support had over 3,500 signatures in favor of this. There was also a leaflet that someone else produced and paid and went around to all of our doors, full misinformation about the park. I love disc golf. I love my dogs. I love the park. I actually want to be able to take my kids there and have a safe place for them to play, and I think this will help improve that. And I'm speaking on behalf of all the other families that we work with. I'm a dance teacher. I'm very involved in the community, and so we are 100% behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Powell?
My name is Molly Powell. I live at 1880 East Morton Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020. As you can tell, I'm Save Los Olivos Park. Save Los Olivos Park. Because I am so passionate about keeping this green space. When I first moved here in 2005, I came from Southern California. It is the land of concrete. I would not like Phoenix to be the land of concrete. I love Los Olivos. I found it out by going to a nearby Sprouts that, to me, is about a five-minute walk away. So I can go to Sprouts, I can get my food, and then I can enjoy the park. I can sit in a park bench. I can play frisbee golf. I can watch people play soccer. I can just take a nice, long walk in the open field. I would be really sad that we're commercializing this. I understand the garden part. There are other gardens and parks around that have already been developed. It would be very sad for me to see this, to have a restaurant. No, there's restaurants, like I said, a five-minute walk away, and it just really breaks my heart, and I'm very happy and pleased to be standing for something I believe in. Keep this green space. Thank you so much.
Brian Stanley?
I live at 3015 East Palm Lane, a couple miles from the park, although I used to go up there, former decades, I was kind of young and kind of fit. Used to go there to use the exercise course that runs around the park, and that was a good resource for me. But I'd like to address, I think, one of the aspects that hasn't been mentioned here, and that is that it's not even possible to estimate the size of the financial gift the city would be making to the concessionaire, because no attempt has been made, even though the heart of this project is to turn the part of the park that fronts on 28th Street into commercial usage, there's been no attempt to value the 28th Street frontage of the park as commercial frontage. If that were done, I think we'd see that the gift to this concessionaire probably is in the range of 10 to 15 million, or, actually, it kind of depends on what discount rate you apply to the 40 years of this concession. You know, I'd kind of like to know, it's a very impressive public relations campaign that has been described. I'd like to know how much the concessionaire spent on it, and were there paid circulators for their petition? In any event, the concession structure, I mean, this is, it's insane. There is nothing in this proposal for periodic review of the concession, review and renewal of the concession, which is standard in concessions of this type, for metrics to determine whether the concession is actually delivering. Nothing of that kind is in this package. I think the City Council needs to step in and slow down the consideration of this package.
Thank you. Brandy Ingram?
I'm Brandy Ingram, 3028 East Glen Rosa. We live right on the northeast corner of the park. We've lived there since 2010. So like my husband said earlier, it is true that we don't take our children to play at the actual park because of all of the riffraff that goes on, so we're very hopeful that something so positive could bring very wonderful change for the greater good. And I've personally met with Eric. He seems like such a wonderful man with a big heart. So I am a physician assistant. I use food as the medicine, or, food is thy medicine. So having a sustainable, local, organic farm, even my four-year-old was like, look, we can walk right across the street to get our food, like, absolutely amazing. So I think that is important. I've also been to a lot of the other farms, you know, Farm at South Mountain, which is such a wonderful space, attracts a lot of family, very like-minded, you know, earth-friendly, conscious people. And I know that a lot of our friends in the neighborhood are looking for a place to go that's similar to hang out with their families. You know, we have to drive to Granada Park and Coachina Park, these other parks that aren't right there, so to have it in our own neighborhood would be wonderful. I'm trying to think, like, there's so many good things, like, an education center, it's very important that our kids are educated on food, and hopefully, they make millions of dollars, because when you serve people and you add value and you help others, you deserve to make a lot of money. So who cares how much money they make? They should make millions of dollars by bringing something so amazing to the community. And I would also recommend that you find some younger people to get on your case if you're going to spit. It's only elderly, like, we need it, we need it.
Thank you.
Shortest person to use this mic. Okay, hi. My name is Ashley Nye. I live at 4231 North 35th Street. So I'm a resident, and I'm also a landscape architect. I am 100% for the park. It's been mentioned before that I have dogs, and I also have a child, and I don't go to this park for safety reasons. I actually went with my dog and then just went right back home. So when I do take my child and my dog, I do the same thing. I go to 40th Street Park, and there is a safety concern at this park. So I'm all for making this a better place, and a place for me to go. I think it's wonderful that we have the senior center there, and I think diversifying the age group that we're also appealing to is the right thing to do. I would love a place for me and my family to go. And I also think it's a place of cohesion, where you have seniors being able to be there, young children being able to be there, you know, middle-aged people being able to be there, and this is a place for the community gather. As a result, I am the starter of the petition, the in-support petition on change.org, and as of a few seconds ago, we have 3,574 signatures in support of this project, which, as a landscape architect and somebody who does this a lot, that's unprecedented amount of support. I'm amazed that we were able to get that many signatures, that I was able to get that many signatures by starting a change.org petition is phenomenal. many signatures by starting a change.org petition is phenomenal. I, I, years ago, spoke about urban parks to ASU and different community organizations on trying to get urban parks. This is a wonderful way to get an urban park and make it work here in Phoenix. I lived in Seattle for many years and moved back because family health issues, but I was a part of compost projects there and urban parks, and I'm so proud that Phoenix is taking a step towards urban parks and compost systems, and I can't wait to be a part of it. And thank you for your time.
So I have, not wishing to speak, but they did speak earlier, is John Irwin, Robert Showman, James Ramsey, and then I have Trey Lake in favor. The previous names were opposed, and then I have Trey Lake in favor. That is all of our public comments. We are moving to item number one, minutes of the previous meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve December 6, 2017, minutes.
Second. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We are now on items two through six. I would like to pull out item number four. If we could have a motion for item two, three, five, and six, and then a discussion of number four once we're done with the consent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items two through six, pulling out item number four.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, we would like to discuss item number four. It's 2018-2019 Head Start Funds Contract with Delegate Agencies. Councilman Nowakowski has some questions.
You know, we always been asked about agencies that want to apply and become delegates for our services, especially when it comes to Head Start. Is this the opportunity for those outside organizations or nonprofits to apply? I know that within our own district, my own district, that there's areas that really need this type of services. So before approving it, I just wanted to know if there's an opportunity to look at other agencies that might be out there that would be good stewards with, with this program.
No. No, I can't hear you. Sergio?
Hello? Is that better? Now we can. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chairwoman Pastor and Councilman Nowakowski. I'm Michelle Franklin, the interim director of the Human Services Department, and I have also at the table with me Melanie Pharaohs, who is our program manager in our Head Start Division. This particular item that is before you is separate from, and I'm going to allow you to speak a little bit further on that, the opportunity that will be presented for agencies and entities to be able to provide services as part of a Head Start provider. But I'd like for Melanie to provide a little bit more detail relative to the item.
If I may, Vice Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, members of the subcommittee, specifically, I know you've inquired previously other opportunities. We are in the last year of our Head Start grant application. We will be coming forward to you here in the spring to talk about the re-competition with all the changes at the federal level and changes to the Head Start Act. In the next cycle, around this time next year, we would be doing exactly what you're inquiring. We will be rebidding the entire Head Start grant, and that would be the opportunity for new competition, potentially anybody that's wanting to provide Head Start services. So this is working with our delegates in this last year, but we will be having to go through that entire process.
Will be, my understanding is we'll be going through a rebid, and then at that moment, that's when all the different agencies can apply, and then there's a whole process.
Yes, there is some new federal requirements that came into play, and so we'll have to incorporate all those into the new rebid process as well.
Would there be a training for those individuals so that we basically know if they qualify or they don't qualify?
Sure. Chairman Pastor and Councilman Nowakowski, that is a part of our plan, to include the opportunity for anyone who is interested to learn what the process will look like, what will be the requirements, and provide resources where we can so that individuals, excuse me, can be successful at least in trying to work through the process.
Perfect. I have no other questions.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I have a motion to approve item number four.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven is for information only. Anybody? Nope? Okay. Item eight, I, as the park board, agenda review, Councilman Nowakowski has a conflict with South Mountain Tower. If we can pull out the South Mountain Tower and not discuss that, but just discuss everything else, that would be great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Parks Subcommittee, today I'm going to review the agenda that will go before the Parks and Recreation Board tomorrow. The first item, information only, there is a gift that the Walton Family Foundation provided to the Parks Recreation Department to improve Trail 100, which is over in the Phoenix Mountain Preserves. They actually are going to pay for half of the renovations that we were already going to be doing, so we were able to match that and save some 3PI funds for that gift. Repayment of 3PI, we do a monthly update to kind of just tell the Parks Recreation Board where we're at. Currently, we do, as you heard earlier, we do have some money that has come in. We also have one pending sale. Cofelt IGA with Maricopa County Housing Authority, because it really is the purview of the city council, it's just going to information for the Parks Board, just to tell them that now that the facility is nearly completed at Cofelt, we'll be entering into an agreement, again, that we've had previously, to provide recreation programs for the community in that area. We also are giving them information about the fact that they'll be going through boards and commission ethics training. Even though we won't have the training at that point, we're just preparing them for what it will include, and we'll, we actually have the training for the staff that day, and then we'll tell the commissioners about it the next, that same day. Information to discussion, we're going to give some details about the Hans Park Master Plan and the Economic Impact Study, some really good numbers that are coming from that over 30 years. The, the person who did the economic impact study for us believes that there will be $6.6 billion worth of revenue generated because of that. So that's a good, that's a good number for that particular park. And they broke it down in between 10, 15, and 30 years for us, so we would have those numbers as well. Consent items, Camp Colley Foundation, letter of understanding, that's our agreement with the Camp Colley Foundation to raise money to send kids to the camp. We also are currently working to make sure that that camp is up and running again this year. Request to vend, Dine With Your Dog Event at Heritage Park. We have to go, anytime there's vending in the park, we have to go to the Parks Board, and that's what this program is about. Encanto Bus Stop, there was a request by transit to have a shaded bus stop that's going to impact slightly the Encanto Golf Course, and so for a very small portion of that golf course, which wasn't in, in play at all, it was someplace that it could be safely put, there's going to be a shaded bus stop now for the people who are on that street, where before there was not a shaded bus stop. Designation of city-owned property as mountain preserves, there's a few of our mountain preserves that we didn't have the correct language of the ordinance, so we're making sure we clean that up so that we can save our preserves for the future. So that's going before the Parks Board, and it'll come to the council the following month. Policy items, North Mountain Park Tower Road, that project actually started Monday, and that involves a small parking lot that's right off 7th Street that, over the years, has been popular for people to get a quick hike in and out. But because of the project with the Tower Road, we will be recommending that the Parks Board close that lot and then improve a trail that comes from the, comes from the visitor center to get people over there, and there's more parking over there, and it's a safer situation for everybody, not just the people going up and down and servicing the tower, but the people who are actually hiking. Slackline, Slackline is a sport where you tie a band, a strand, between either two trees or two poles, and so we have a pilot that's going to happen in Encanto Park to see if this is something we should be looking more into. We've had somebody approach us, and they were very interested in this. You know, we want to make sure they do it safely. You know, there's rules about how high you can put the slackline, where you can put it in the girth of the tree that you would put it around, and things that would protect the tree. So that's going to come before as a policy. And again, we'll evaluate it. You know, we're seeing lots, lots of interesting uses of parks and trees and things, and so that will be the first part that gets us towards addressing some of those issues. And Little Canyon Park, Grand Canyon University is interested in trading some land, and so we'll be talking about, this is the first step to go to the public process. They won't be talking really about the details of it, because we have to go to the community to see if this is something that the community wants before we bring it back for the full five-step process. And that's the meeting in a nutshell.
Yeah. I have a question about the slackline policy.
Yes.
Where in Encanto Park are they doing this? Are they using it in the softball fields or the soccer fields?
No. We have an area, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, we have an area just right off of Holly in the corner, where there's a couple of trees. And so we've worked with the community, and the community's up for the pilot. You know, we'll see how it goes. We're going to evaluate it and make some adjustments if we need to. It is a very popular and kind of growing sport, especially with college students and kids that are of that daring age, so.
Okay. Good to know. Let, let us know what happens.
Thank you.
Any items? I have no cards for call to the public, any future items? Other than the ones we said earlier? Nope? Yes? Sal? No?
Are we ever going to review the hours?
Which hours?
The Parks hours?
Oh, yeah, the Park hours. Okay. Meeting adjourned.